Good afternoon, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started with our regular monthly board meeting of the McDowell County Board of Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone that's here tonight, and we look forward to having a good meeting and very informative and so welcome you again. We always, as always, will start our meeting out with a pledge and a prayer, and Commissioner Vice Chair Walther will lead us in the prayer, and Commissioner Allison will lead us in the pledge.
As they withstand the faith against this place, dear heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for all your blessings, dear Lord, your goodness, so good to us, and want to say thank you for what you've done, and dear Lord, I just praise you to meet us aboard tonight, you give us wisdom, guidance, and help us to make the right decisions that would be most helpful to the people we represent, and that would be pleasing in your eyes, dear Lord, bless our county, bless our nation, dear Lord, and we thank you again for your wisdom that you give us daily, dear Lord, and bless our troops overseas, keep them safe, and thank you, dear son Jesus, who died on the cross for our sins and rose three days later, and thank you, pray amen.
Attention, salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, your motion approved, made to the House of Representatives. Motion, say it. All the folks out. Motion to approve the agenda for the night.
Mr. Chairman, I've got two items I want to see, one is a resolution, and the second is concerning listed titles and book registration.
Okay. Second, move. Okay, moving forward now on our first call tonight is Ida May, the new TDA director in production, so we've got Mr. Shannon Odom here with us tonight, and Shannon, we welcome you to podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Board of Commissioners, I'm Shannon Odom, I am the new Tourism Development Authority Chairman, or Executive Director, and originally from Greenville, South Carolina, originally, and for the last five years, I've been down in Columbia, South Carolina, working for South Carolina Parks Recreation Tourism as the International Manager there, so really focused more on inbound visitation from a European and really Canadian perspective as well, so that was sort of it, that's through a marketing program, through trade shows, we work very closely with our state parks, which was under the parks umbrella, or the Discover South Carolina umbrella as well. Prior to that, I was in Montana for close to four years, I worked for the Big Sky Chamber of Commerce, as well as a smaller community organization called the Big Sky Community Organization, which was really all about building parks and trails out there, so I think when I saw this position open up, it really was a great match for me, especially with what I see going on in Old Ford and in Pisgah National Forest with the trail building, with the G5 Trail Collective, the McDowell Trails Association, lots of good things that really we can build on from a tourism perspective here, so I'm really looking forward to marketing this area and all the natural assets that McDowell County offers visitors, particularly when you talk about the natural space we have, the wonderful small towns, those are really things that I enjoy, I'm a huge hiker, camper, kayaker, so again, I thought it was a great fit for when this position opened up, which led me to apply for it. I also spent about 20 years in Charleston with Explore Charleston, so I sort of have a background on how to manage tourism responsibly as well, I think that's a big component of when you market tourism, you have to be mindful of the community and its impact on the community. On one hand, it's a benefit for the residents to have a vibrant tourist economy, it's a better way of life for many people, but it can also be hindrance, and so we have to administer that very carefully, so we'll be doing that, I'll be hopefully opening up the lines of communication with the Board, with Ashley, with the City of Marion, with Old Ford as well, so looking forward to be more involved in really committees, the Chamber of Commerce as well, so there's a lot of opportunity here, and just looking forward to that, bringing my experience, like I say, from being in Charleston for 20 years, a smaller town like Big Sky, which had many of the challenges of over tourism, the small amount of restaurants, and a lot of visitation in sort of peak periods, so we'll be looking at how to manage that, and then, of course, just taking what we have here in this county and making it to the best that it can be, and we'll need all your help with that and support, and so thank you, if you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer those as well.
We're certainly excited to have you on board, and we're looking forward to a lot of the crossroads ideas and things that you'll bring to the table for us, and I have to ask this question, what, you said you were a kayaker, and you're from Montana, or spent time in Montana, and I've spent a lot of time in Montana, did you ever do the Wild Mile in Big Ford?
Oh, I did not, actually, but I missed that one, I did not. I was a, we did more flat water kayaking, so I didn't get too much into the whitewater, we did a lot of lake kayaking, and then a couple of fly fishing trips, too, so that was always a good time down the Madison, but didn't do the Galluson River and the Wild Mile there, too much.
Mr. Odom, are you familiar with Destination McDowell? We, the city and the county are working with them on several projects, and I thought maybe from your location where you came from, you probably would be aware of this group.
I have been explained to by the Board, I was not familiar with it beforehand, but I am becoming more familiar with it, and will be meeting with the group, I think it's out of Boone, that's sort of administering that program, will be working, you know, on the streetscape projects, the wayfinding, all of that with Destination McDowell and Destination by Design, so I think that was one of the things that I looked forward to when I saw that there was such a robust plan for this area, to me, that was a huge part of, obviously, not just a way of life, but a tourism enhancement program, so I'll be looking forward to getting involved with that, but was not familiar with it before getting here.
You have a comment? Okay, thank you, Mr. Odom.
Thank you.
Next, under Ida May, the faith program, we've got Ms. Kirsten?
Yes.
Come on with us tonight, so Kirsten, we welcome you to podium.
Fantastic, great, well, I'm so excited to be here this evening, and you get a point for pronouncing my name correctly, I love that, did you cheat?
Most people would never did, I mean, what I did, I wrote it down with an E, so.
Absolutely, my mama made it very hard for me, so that's all right, so, thank you guys so much, so, I'm Kirsten Kohn, I'm the Program Director at our Care Partners Pace Program, and that stands for Program of All-Inclusive Care for the Elder, and I am going to try to condense what Pace is into about 10 minutes, so I'm going to try to move quickly, but leave you some time for questions, and I hope this is the beginning of many, many conversations about how we can serve the elders of McDowell County, so I'm excited. So, I think it's interesting, as Shannon got to start and kick things off, when I was looking about coming to talk to you all, I always like to start with the why, I need to know why I'm doing things, why I'm investing money, why I'm hiring people, why they should work hard for what they do, and so, as care partners, we are part of the HCA family, and our motto is, right, we're committed to the care and improvement of human life, but for us intimately at Pace, above all of our doors and our conference rooms, we have the phrase, "We transform lives," and so we really have a mission statement for us, that we exist to transform lives, and I feel like there's an alignment here at this time, as I believe all things happen for a reason, McDowell County sounds like it is in a real transformation system, so I, too, actually did some research before coming in, and I actually did look up that really cool Buncombe, Buncombe sites to McDowell sites to all the areas around, and you have really interesting growth in your tourism, wanting to come to different areas, I'm a mom of a nine-year-old and 13-year-old boys, and so we are in the woods a lot, and so to me, to be able to come and hike and camp and bring that, I'll call myself an adult child, because my parents are still retired and moved to the area to be near me, I think there's an area to bring in elder services as well, so I hope that we offer a way to promote your community, and specifically in the health and wellness environment. So, we really believe, and I hope to share with you, that Pace is something different. I tend to be a tree shaker, a little bit of a disruptor, and so Pace is a model of care that's team-based medicine, it is not physician-led, it is not a fee-for-service model, it's a group of clinicians and non-clinicians coming together to serve a whole person, and I think all of us know that we value kind of community settings, not institutional settings, and that there's a dignity as we age, to age in our home and age with those that we love, and so, really, Pace, I will show you, hopes to address not only your health and well-being, but also what we would call your social determinants of health, do you have access to the internet, do you have food security, do you have transportation, so all of those things make our lives more robust, so that we can enjoy the loved ones that we so enjoy spending time with. Added a few websites onto there, so you can go and look at things, there's some information kind of all around, so the top pictures are our actual Pace participants, yes, they've signed the waivers to be in the photos, and so the top one is an outing we did to, with some of our guys' club, we went to an arboretum out with others, and then we had a youth group in, and so, as of 2022, Pace along the nation has 144 programs, it's in 32 states, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that May is Older Americans Month, so Happy Older Americans Month, and so there's really a commitment that you're seeing around the country to understand the graying of our nation, and so as we're continuing to age and our Medicare and Medicaid populations are growing, we need to come up with some solutions. Interestingly, the Pace model started in a community, so it started in the San Francisco Bay Area, a program called ONLOCK, it's a Cantonese term that kind of talks about friendship and community and care and compassion, but again, it was families that said, "We had our elders growing older, and how are we going to care for them?" And so this program started and now has become a federal program that's available throughout the entire country. So, in our good old state of North Carolina, I've had the pleasure of being in, serving our elders in Buncombe and Henderson County since 2014, so I opened the program there as their Operations Director, and then transitioned into the Program Director just two and a half years ago. So, we, as a state, are actually the fourth most populated state with Pace, there was a huge influx and excitement in our Raleigh partners to support what Pace brings, and of the 11 programs, Care Partners is the baby, so we are the youngest, but we're actually the third largest, so we've had great success with meeting the needs of our folks in western North Carolina. Tells you a little bit about kind of who we are, 95% of our folks still live in the community, average age is 77, every place program, I think mine is actually 80, 81, and all the folks that come here need some help with some type of activity of daily living. So, what is Pace? So, let's start first with who am I talking about, or what, who is eligible to join our program? So, our program is for folks 55 and older, it is folks that would be certified for a nursing home level of care, really what that means is a complexity of medical problems in which a physician will deem them qualifying, and they have to be safely cared for in the community, so our folks live at home, either independently or with loved ones, and right now, the Pace program works by designated counties, so we only have been given approval for the past few years of Buncombe and Henderson County, and we're actively in the process right now submitting to both CMS and to the state to expand to both serve all of Transylvania and all of McDowell, and I'll tell a little bit more that we're on track, and if all goes well, by January of 2024, we would hopefully be able to serve your elders and your community. People always like to start with the money, so we get the money out of the way first, it's the least important to me, but that's fine, we are funded through a capitated system, so a per member per month, so for every person that comes into Pace, I get a lump sum, and that sum is from Medicare and from Medicaid, and that blended payment is how we run our operations, and just like at home, hopefully I spend less than I take in, and my checking account balances at the end, as we are fully at risk and fully accountable for all of the risks that happen, so if one of our elders falls and breaks a hip, I pay the hospital bill, I pay the ramp, I pay for the wheelchair, I pay for the drugs, I pay for the home care, I pay for the rehab after that, so wherever they are, we are their coordinator and provider of care in addition to the cost that it covers. The Part D provider, and that's a pharmacy provider, so we have an onsite pharmacist and manage medications. So, Pace is case management on steroids, if you want to bubble wrap someone in a lot of services, and I'm going to take Victoria, since she's the youngest of the group over here, so we're going to bubble wrap Victoria, she grays and ages in our society, and pretend that she's this awesome 80-year-old woman that's still rocking it in the system, and we're going to make sure that we support whatever's passionate to her, and so we're going to make sure she has a primary care practice at our facility, that she can have one spot shot coordinated care, we're going to give her access to therapy, so physical therapy, speech therapy, occupational therapy, recreation therapy, so that we can go fly fishing with our modified pole, which I would love to do, have our Adult Day Services, so be able to commune with others, to have a nice meal together, to have someone provide some personal care, and so all of that is happening in, right now, at our main kind of hub of, at the Buncombe County location in South Asheville. There also is the ability to serve at an alternative care site, which is something closer to someone's home, and in that home, it might be just the Adult Day Center, or it might be just the personal care to do that, but while we're trying to bubble wrap Victoria and all of this, we're going to make sure that she needs transportation to come to and from where we go, so presently, our fleet has 14 buses, we do about 270 trips a day, and so we are taking folks to and from the center, as well as all of their outside appointments. We're on call 24 hours a day, so when it's Sunday and your stomach's upset, you can call our online call, and our team who takes care of you picks up the phone, might call in a prescription to a local pharmacy, and make sure that you have a consult with our nurse to make sure that you're okay. We also are going to follow you wherever you go, so if you need short-term care or long-term care, if you have an emergency room visit, we're on the phone, we're sharing that information, and we're hoping that your cardiologist is talking to your neurologist, or that the people that you work with know how to communicate, and we're helping them. And then maybe Victoria has a daughter who's still working and is helping her at home, but needs to get to work, and so we're going to provide some home care services, so that she can go out and maybe grocery shop, we're going to have that home care aide come in and tidy up the home a little bit, do some laundry, and just make sure whatever is needed to kind of support the unit of kind of a caregiver and a participant could work together. And then last but not least, we might modify the home, we might bring in a good ramp to make it easier to get in and out of the house, to go to your grandchild's soccer game or baseball game, and we're going to make sure that we could do any kind of home renovations, maybe reinforce a floor with supportive power wheelchair, so really, if you can feel like, again, the breadth of all those services together, that's what Pace is, and it's done by this interdisciplinary team, so you have this wonderful mix of team-based clinicians who can get quite passionate, and they can go back and forth about what's in the best interests, including the participant and their family in that conversation. So, who is this person that we're kind of talking about as we were playing with Victoria? I appreciate you. This is the person, when you all as community members think about that person who's maybe lonely, isolated, lacking engagement, that person might be a Pace participant. Those in the medical community may be struggling to really get the right amount of care for this person, because they need more high touch, they need the social worker who will call and remind them, or maybe the pharmacist that can show them how to take their medications. This is the participant, the elder themselves, who's going, "Gosh, I keep going to the hospital, I keep going to the emergency room, this is not where I want to be," or this could be the caregiver that is just struggling and ready to tap out to say, "I love my mom, I love my dad, but I need a village, and I need more help to do this." So, again, typically it can be that 80-year-old female, lots of medical diagnoses, but we have 55-year-olds and we have 104-year-olds, is the oldest and the youngest in our program right now. It's a small little kind of metric on the bottom, but I like measures, I think you need to inspect what you expect, so before and after Pace, this is something called Zerick Burden, it's caregiver stress score, so as you think about serving your community, as folks are trying to be active and productive citizens and care for their elders, their stress score could be very high, and so you'll see it's a high, almost 50%, is those who are joining Pace, and that's the large blue on the right-hand side. After joining Pace, we've really seen that that reduction, they're still stressed, we're not going to take it all away, but it's definitely going to reduce down, because there's other people that are helping. I can sit up here and you can trust me or not trust me of what I'm saying, but I like to share at least some of our satisfaction survey results, so we were asked, "What do you like best about Pace?" What folks know about me is I'm a crier, so I'm going to try not to get through this without crying, I wear my heart on my sleeve, and I do work that makes me feel like a whole soulful person, and I'll keep doing that till the day I'm done. The hope that it offers me, I'm not just existing. If I could go someplace and someone says, "I don't just exist, but they really care about me," that's the program I want to be in, and so when I think of Dawn and Anita and all the folks that we've transformed their lives, I know, I can hear this coming out of their mouth, I love that I had a daughter that said, "They always have the person's best possible goal in mind, they take away the fears, they've been so good to me, they help you organize your life, the girl who comes to my house does my shopping for me and helps me remember things," I love one of those, that'd be great. We could probably put the other things up here, too, because we're not perfect, right, we can have the "it's too cold in the day" center, the green beans were mushy at lunch, we need to still make sure that the transportation ride is better, and so we really have a continuous improvement learning environment, where we're trying to always do better when we know better. My regulatory friends would love you to share that I am highly regulated, I feel like I'm audited all the time, I do think that's important, and I don't think that's a problem, I think we should make sure that people do what we're supposed to be doing, and in the world of healthcare, that can get a little bit out of alignment, and for us, think about a three-legged stool, so we have a federal component, which is CMS, and so we meet once a quarter with them, they come out for multiple days to inspect us, we then have our local state partner, our Department of Health and Human Benefits, and so we talk to them all the time, and they come out quarterly to audit us, and then we actually work with our local folks, so we have not only our health department, but we work with DSS, and so we're making sure that we're having our Adult Day monitoring, which happens monthly and unannounced, so lots of opportunities for us to work together on both the federal and local level. So, if this sounds exciting, confusing, all those things, I'm going to take some questions, but I wanted to at least share kind of where we're going from here, so we believe, based on the information, that we know there are definitely elders here in all of your zip codes that could benefit from additional services, and we believe they deserve a choice, and so the state vision is to have Pace offered in all 100 counties of North Carolina, and my vision is hopefully within the 18 counties that I'm responsible for, we will continue to have Pace as an option. So, right now, we have submitted for a service area expansion, and that submittal will go to CMS in June. We hope to hear simultaneously, we have identified you have two beautiful senior centers, but you have no Adult Day Health Centers in all of McDowell County, and so we're going to be applying for an Adult Day Services Health Center here in Marion, so we feel centralized to the location of your folks, and that we'll be able to run that Adult Day program there, that alternative care site, where folks not have to travel all the way to Buncombe if they don't want to, they'll have something close. If we get the approval, we could enroll folks starting in October, they would have to come to our Pace Center in Buncombe until this location would be up and running, or they could have a home-based program, many folks don't come to the Pace Center except for to see their doctor, they use their church communities and their local communities, and just use it as a doctor's office and coordinated care, and given everything on the beautiful timeline, we would hope to start serving elders at that Marion Adult Day Health Site starting in the first quarter. So, I'm really excited, I think we have an opportunity to work together with the senior centers, with the healthcare community, with our religious partners in the area, and with all of you to really support young people that are living in the community that might want to bring their elders with them, elders that have aged in this community and want to remain here, and so I'm just excited that this could be another choice for the people that you serve, and with that, I'm going to open it to questions for you all.
Wow, we're sort of excited about this, and it seems like this area has been targeted by a lot of elderly people that are wanting to move in here, they have a retirement home, and so that's going to keep increasing our elderly in this area, but it's really exciting, and I'm looking forward to it.
I'm going as fast as I can, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm excited, but I hope actually in this time that we're waiting, and I do, there's always a lot to be learned from waiting, I think that we can learn, what do you all need, what does this county need that's unique, how can we bring or position certain services, what kind of jobs we'll have that we can support the community in, what are the business contracts we can start working together to figure out how we can support that, so I still think there's a lot of work that we can do in the interim while we're waiting for the final, you know, green light.
Have you met our, Mr. Praver, about to be behind you?
I did, I had the pleasure this evening, I'm looking forward, I was putting him in my LinkedIn account to make sure we can connect for some future conversations.
One, our DSS Director, too, we know that would be a person.
Yes, I've reached out to them on the phone, and DSS has not, because they've not had an Adult Day, we already connected them with the support they need to know how to monitor us and what they would have to do with that, and I think we're really excited, I know Marcia, as the CEO over at the McDowell Hospital, is excited to see how we can work together, so I just see lots of really great partnerships together, and I'm excited to get folks, elders, fly fishing, we got to do adaptive fly fishing, I learned to fly fish in Wyoming, so it was very fun.
I served on the Senior Advisory Committee with Wayland, and this is a topic that has been mentioned several times, and I know Wayland will vouch for that, but this is really exciting.
Well, great, well, right now, we're not, we've been embraced with all positive energy, so I ask for your continued prayers and thoughts as we kind of go through with that, we'll navigate through the interim, and I think then we'll have an opportunity to really hopefully become part of this community.
Do your physicians work specifically for you in the base program?
They do, so presently, Dr. Chris Patterson is our Medical Director, and then we just hired an additional physician, so Jennifer joined us maybe a month ago, we have two nurse practitioners, and then at full capacity, we'll have six teams, so four nurse practitioners and two MDs that serve full-time, we keep the panel very small, so each of them only see 70 participants each, because we feel it allows for that intimate complexity of our. we feel it allows for that intimate complexity of our folks.
Is that the four-county area?
And I think again, as we grow, if there is a bigger desire, we can kind of fluctuate. You know, you actually in McDowell have, we're going to be using the Care Partners Home Hospice Building and modifying pieces of that to offer the Adult Day Center that we can run out of. There's even an unfinished floor in that basement. So if there was an overwhelming need, I might be coming back and saying, we're going to, you know, grow even more. But I think right now, we want to make sure we get going and establish the relationships. I think it's important to deliver on the care you say you're going to do before you think too big.
I do think that the attention, the quicker the attention, the better for seniors. I've got senior parents that are 55, 86, and my father tried to get an eye appointment last week, and it was for May of next year. And he told me, he said, I'm probably going to be dead, don't worry about it. It's just one of those things that I'm hoping that the attention to the detail and accuracy and upfront for the seniors can be better.
I 100% agree. I think there is absolutely going to be delays in certain things we can control and things kept in that situation. I would say our occupational therapists are skilled in certain eye screenings. Our doctors can do some things that we can do. We can put a little pressure on as we can kindly, but insistently about expediting different pieces. But we have had good success. You know, we've seen, because we are the insurer, we don't have so many constraints. So right where an insurance company may say, you can only see your physical therapist, I'm a physical therapist by background, 12 times. If I believe someone needs to see a physical therapist every day for two years, then I do. So we believe in kind of right care at the right time by the right provider. And so I think it just takes a commitment to the kind of Jenga puzzle to try to figure out how the pieces go together, and then we normally tend to get really great results. Hopefully next time, and I could have brought those, our emergency room stays are one of the lowest in the state, our hospitalizations. We believe that when folks go into that level of care, we've kind of failed in the community. We use a lot of telehealth in the home so that the son or daughter can look at the app on their phone if they want to help keep an eye on mom or use a medication. And we also love our adult children, but we're going to revere our elders. So we also do a lot of remember your mom is still in charge kind of things. I think we will take that and make sure as we build contracts, we'll ask for expectations and timeframe. No?
Thanks so much.
Do we have your contact info?
You should. It's in here, as it has it there. I have some cards, I could leave those in a brochure too as well.
I have somebody I want to put in touch with. I know that's got some questions.
Absolutely, would love to answer those. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. With that, next on Indiana, we have our Senior Center Updates, and we have Mr. Waylon Prager here for that, so that's a good follow-up.
Thank you for letting me come and speak tonight. Kirsten, they might not be able to show because they have remained stoked. I am so excited. I am so excited. In fact, when I heard about it, Ashley called me on my birthday, and goes, I have some great news to share with you, that PACE Buncombe has applied for McDowell County's zip codes to increase their PACE program to our area. I told Ashley that I could never gotten a better birthday gift in my life, so thank you for making that happen. Before I talk just a little bit about the Senior Center, I just want to talk about the importance of what PACE really means for this community here in McDowell. She talked about the Adult Day Health Program. That is something that we have always, we have needed for decades here in this community to assist those that are taking care of those with dementia. The other part of this really is, is that I've got to share something with you before I move on. And this just shows how much you all are into this, because this goes back to a letter dated December 5th, 2016. And it was to your predecessor, and it said, this is a letter of support from McDowell County, considered as a possible expansion community for the Care Partners PACE Program. Guess what? We're there! So 2016, just took a little bit of time, but if we're looking for 2024, it's coming around the corner. This is going to be amazing. One more thing I want to share about this is, is that I was so interested in this program for many, many years. And I actually went down to Charlotte Mecklenburg, they were doing a celebration of our PACE programs. And I got to meet not only individuals in the PACE program, but their caregivers. And one caregiver described PACE as this. He said, if someone had handed me a magic wand, and they said, I could have any services that I could for my wife. That is what PACE is. PACE has brought everything that I needed to be able to keep my wife in our home, take care of her, to get relief during the daytime, so that I can recharge myself and be the spouse that I can be from my husband. And I, when he said that, it was just so impactful of how important this is. This is such an amazing game changer for our community. And so whatever support that we can give you, please let us know, because this is wonderful. And I really appreciate it, for those who were there back then, seven years later. Yep, my math's right. Almost seven years later that we're here getting to discuss this wonderful program in our community. So it says Senior Center Updates, but I actually have all period mode. I actually came with a couple of requests today, but I can tell you, the Senior Centers is still open, we've not had any fires. We're still feeding people, haven't had any riots recently, so we're doing okay in that respect, I think overall. But we are experiencing a wonderful thing. So we went through a terrible time during COVID when our centers were shut down. We reopened, and people are coming back, and they're coming back in force, which is wonderful, especially our Congress dining programs. I just looked at the numbers from April of last year to April of this year, we were up 11% in just people coming to our dining, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it really, really is, because the people coming to our Senior Centers are different every single day. We're serving a lot of people in this community. And I wanted to talk a little bit about our AC BiHopen Community Center, which we opened up in 2009. You all helped us with that, and I appreciate that so very much. But we do have some people here from the Old Fort side. Can you guys raise your hands here tonight? They are here. I'm very happy to notice just a couple of hours, but they wanted to come down to hear about this request that I have. So we have this wonderful center built in 2009, and what we realized very, very quickly afterwards was that the site is absolutely beautiful and gorgeous, but not quite big enough to do everything that we want to do down there. So we started raising funds in a building fund, and as of today, we have $61,251 that has been raised so far for this project. And the project is to put a building addition onto that site. And what we're looking for this space is a classroom that will be used for a multitude of different things, from exercise classes to educational classes. Joe, do you want any craft classes in there?
Yes.
Yes, you know. Joe, do we need this? Do we do?
We definitely need it.
We need it.
We've grown so much into a offering into this space, trying to use the same tables for everything that's going on.
So to kind of put that in perspective is, is that we've got this wonderful dining room space down there, where we're trying to do everything. We do have a wonderful exercise room, which can't be even there, so we're trying to do everything in the same room down there. So this would allow for the expansion of additional programming down there, which Joe and many other residents in Old Fort would like to participate in. As I said, we've been trying to raise funds from people giving private donations over the years, and we're using our building funds, selling bricks for that site and our site. And so we have not a lot of money, but we do have so many rigs so far. And so our request to you all is to allow us to start moving forward by first off, getting estimated cost for the building, for the building addition, and then also putting together some design options for what we can put on that site. Jay Suddles, our county building inspector, was nice enough to walk on that site a while back with me and talk about what we could put on that space, and we could put something really wonderful up there that's going to have such lasting impact. So you opened up this center in 2009, here we are in 2023, and we just look at the decades ahead and all that we can do down there. So again, I'm asking for a request that we move forward in finding out the cost estimations and initial designs so that we can start preparing for the future, but also looking at every funding opportunity we can to help fulfill this project.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we proceed and give permission to have an office that does a schematic cost estimate for the addition of a classroom at the Old Fort facility.
Any other discussion? All the papers out. Good job. They'll celebrate, they're part of our. Now, one more request that I have today is, involves more than just McDowell County, involves the state of North Carolina, and particularly looking at those that reside in our long-term care facilities and institutional facilities all across the state. Now, back in 1987, there was what was created called Personal Needs Allowance. So what that is, when you're in a skilled nursing facility, long-term care, for example, most of your income goes towards providing for that cause, plus the state of North Carolina puts additional funding in there to help pay for the person to be there. But they allow people to keep $30 for personal expenses, and that includes things like hairstyling, vitamins, personal care products, clothing, underwear, you know, all these just little things that we need on a daily basis. Now that $30, do you know how long ago that was set? 1987. So 35 years later, you know how much it is now? $30. And so for our residents in these facilities, what the senior Tarville Legislature, legislature brought towards our state legislators was support in the House, in favor of House Bill 476. House Bill 476 just states a couple of things that I just wanted to mention to make sure that you understand why it's important. So this is part of the bill. Whereas the Personal Needs Allowance for residents of nursing homes and other institutional settings has been $30 since 1987, which translates to residents having less than half the buying power today than they did 35 years ago. Whereas North Carolina is only one of four states in the country to have never increased the Personal Needs Allowance from the 1987 original amount. So our senior is very passionate about their community, and especially about their friends and families that reside in facilities like this. And so what we would like to ask is that since the North Carolina Senior Tarville Legislature has already put together a resolution to our state legislators to approve this increase, we would like to ask if it would be possible to get a letter of support.
Maybe we did the export request increase. Well, they sent a letter of rebuke, really. I mean, $30 since 1987, that's pitiful.
It is. And just to think about what your buying power was in 1987 versus today, just think about a stamp being 22 cents back then, a day is 63 cents. Think about a card in the days being, I think it was 76 cents. And what are they now, like a $200 or something like that? Exactly what it's gone on for.
I know the name.
But listen, I want to say thank you for recommending the two items that are brought here today, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is out of date, and we have another celebrity here, Ms. Kim Efler.
Here she is, a really good dancer, too.
Oh, good. Have you been talking about? Chairman Brown, Commissioners, County Manager Wooton, County staff, and guests. It is an honor to be with you this evening. I'm not as good as a speaker as these folks that I'm following. For those of you that don't know me, I am Kim Efler, President and CEO of the McDowell Chamber of Commerce. It is hard to believe that I have just celebrated my second year in this role, and I'm approaching my fifth year with the organization. Time really does fly when you're having fun. Several of my, my fan club is here with me. I have a board member and a staff member with me this evening, so I appreciate you all being with me this evening. So our chamber has been very busy since I spoke with you last. It's been quite a while. Commissioner Green, you weren't even here, so it was time to present a State of the Chamber update. So I'd like to hit you with just a few of our proudest accomplishments, and I'm going to do this quickly. So today, our Chamber of membership is stronger and healthier than it has ever been in the history of the Chamber of Commerce since 1957. Today, the Chamber consists of 426 members and 47% of the market share of McDowell County active businesses. Our retention rate has increased year over year for the last five years, and we are currently holding at 93%, which tells me that members who join are sticking with us. To date, our average length of membership is 13 years. Why is this exciting? This is exciting for me because when I entered the Chamber industry, I saw that a demographic and technology shift was threatening Chambers of Commerce, threatening our identity and who we are. Technology eliminates the need for connection and for networking and for communication, and people are not writing checks to be part of an organization just because it's the right thing to do. Young entrepreneurs, the future business owner, they want to see the value of what they're paying their hard-earned money for to stick with that organization. So for me to lay down at night knowing that our members stick with us for an average of 13 years, that's a huge win. The Chamber staff is strong and is well-positioned to carry out the mission of the Chamber, or staff, for two full-time, two part-time people who service all of this community, has a combined 24-year commitment to McDowell County. In 2022, the Chamber recognized the importance of strengthening small business. Business retention is economic development. Recruiting industry is also economic development, but we have to strengthen the businesses that are already with us. So we initiated a free education series with professionals speaking on topics of interest to the business community, including corporate taxes, human resources, community engagement, employee succession planning, employment law, and just to name a few. The sessions attracted an average of 25 people per session, and the City of Marion, McDowell Tech, and other agencies sponsored these events. We plan to continue this series moving forward. The Chamber is interested in diversifying our predominantly manufacturing economy with outdoor recreation and small business. The Chamber has focused on the outdoor economy by partnering with the TDA. Hi, Shannon. And several community nonprofits to study and recommend trail improvements. Chamber staff have participated in visits to other communities, such as Beckville, Arkansas, which was a really cool place to visit, to study models of successful outdoor economies in rural areas. As a result, several outdoor-related businesses have opened in Old Fort, and several miles of trail, as you all know, has been constructed by the county, with plans being made for 50 more miles of trails. The Chamber shares the vision of the county, the city, the town, the MTA, and the TDA to focus on trail projects and to make the outdoor economy a top economic development priority for the future. The Chamber has been an active participant in the McDowell TDA's Tourism Master Plan, Destination McDowell. This plan has identified numerous projects, including trails, streetscapes, and facility improvements that will increase tourism and lead to new business starts and expansion for tourism-related and outdoor-based businesses. One thing that we do well in McDowell County is collaborate. So historically, the Chamber has remained absent from advocacy efforts. Over the past few years, the Chamber has recognized the importance of nonpartisan advocacy initiatives through the lens of business, and has through the lines of business and has focused on several nonpartisan civic education and advocacy events. These efforts included a reception, many of you may remember, held in 2021 for Labor Commissioner Josh Dobson. A 2022 Legislative Breakfast where attendees representing business, government, and education asked questions regarding items of interest and learned about current state legislative priorities and bills. And this coming Friday, we'll host our third Legislative Breakfast with Senator Warren Daniel and Representative Dudley Green. Our goal is to present a panel discussion that will provide our legislators and businesses in the community with an opportunity to learn how McDowell County works together to get things done from an advocacy perspective and again through the lines of business. I hope to see you guys on Friday. We will feed you breakfast. Our Chamber has historically undertaken no governmental advocacy, but we have become a strong voice, a strong advocate for our membership and the business community to all levels of government. After all, if we don't step up and be the voice of business, who will? As you may know, the Chamber owns and operates the McDowell Visitor Center, which sees an average of 20,000 visitors each year. Our guests visit us from all over the nation and the world. Our Visitor Center has the highest visitation by far of all visitor centers in McDowell County and serves as the primary contact and information source for the local community and the region. When people are moving to McDowell County, they call us. When people are visiting McDowell County, they come and see us. We tell people where to go and what businesses to visit, and it's truly an honor to serve the county in that capacity. Chamber staff and board members are heavily involved in the community through business, visits, and calls. I truly think I don't sleep most of the time after reading all of this. With the Chamber continuing to serve as the primary contact and a liaison with business in McDowell County, we've helped numerous businesses solve problems particular to their business. Chamber staff and board members serve on numerous boards or organizations. I serve on 11, not in any one of these counties. With service on these boards greatly increasing over the past 18 months, I truly believe there is no other local entity that works with as many local regional organizations as the Chamber. The Chamber is seen as a primary local convener and is often the only organization that remains neutral and can work effectively with all other local entities. In 2022, the Chamber held 22-member events and ribbon cuttings with 670 guests in attendance. In 2023, we've already hosted six events with nearly 400 guests in attendance, and I promise they all didn't come to watch me dance. Our annual membership banquet welcomed nearly 300 guests, and we raised that evening $4,000 for our Student Link Scholarship Program. The Chamber has added or enhanced programs over the past 18 months. Our Link Program, which I'm super, super proud of, is being expanded to include a true leadership component. The addition of this leadership component is a result of the Chamber's studying examples of leadership programs in the region and determining how best to implement leadership in our community. Our Student Link Program, a condensed version of the Adult Link, has been enhanced as well, and scholarships we provide to students has been increased. This is something that I'm very proud of. In my time with the Chamber, we have presented nearly $23,000 to students in McDowell County schools, seniors that are moving on to higher education. Just today, I presented $4,000 scholarship from that annual banquet win. The Chamber has created our second annual strategic plan that includes an aggressive plan of work with significant progress made on implementation so far in 2023. We are focused on our organizational culture, and as a result, our team is working toward the same goals. As a 501(c)(6), we are limited on our ability to diversify our revenue. We rely on our members, our sponsors, and our community dollars to support our impact in our mission. As a 501(c)(6), we cannot get grant money because of our IRS status. We are considered a business league by the IRS, which constrains our ability to diversify our revenue. So to eliminate this funding burden, and this has been about two years in the works, we have just created our very own 501(c)(3) foundation that will provide us with the opportunity to raise philanthropic dollars and grant funds for Chamber programs and economic betterment. We're very excited about this.
Small bit.
Thank you. The work is here and the passion is here, but the vehicle to that funding was not, so we've eliminated that burden. The annual contribution to the Chamber from the city increased last year by over 185% to $10,000, and we are grateful for the city's contribution. And we also lobbied the TDA last year to provide us with $20,000 more in funding, and that was awarded. The McDowell Chamber of Commerce is healthy. We're vibrant. We're thriving and impacting the business community each and every day. We are in the business of the economic development. We are in the business of supporting business. And while many areas of our organization have changed, one thing that has not changed in decades is the funding support from the McDowell County Government. In 1986, and I could be wrong, reading minutes that are typed on a typewriter is kind of interesting, but to my knowledge, in 1986, the county provided $8,500 in funding to the Chamber. That amount, I don't believe, has changed until 2019, when we began the merger process with the Old Ford Chamber and began receiving their $4,250 county appropriation. So our merger with the Old Ford Chamber was completed in 2020. Therefore, for 36 years, total Chamber funding by the county has remained the same. In light of the great work that the Chamber is doing, the new programs and initiatives that we have put in place, and our plans for even more great success in the future, I would respectfully request that you consider an increase in funding appropriations for the County for the Chamber from the current amount of $12,750, beginning with the quickly approaching fiscal year. We've seen tremendous growth in McDowell County over the past few years, and we are poised for even better growth. Incredible leaders are in charge and are leading this community, and it's truly an honor every day to serve the county in this capacity. We want to continue to increase our value. My challenge is my membership is outgrowing my staff, and budget constraints are challenging. The Chamber wants to, we want to continue to focus on economic development and continue to better the community, but we definitely need your help, your funding, in order to do so. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to provide a State of the Chamber update, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Well, Kirsten, she's got as much energy as you.
I love her. I had to read my script, though.
Kim, we will certainly take heart of this and see what we can do for you.
I appreciate your support. Any questions? You guys are really easing on me. So that puts you asleep.
You did an excellent presentation, and you, that energy I took talking about, you brought this to the Chamber and to the county, and we appreciate it. It's made things better.
Y'all see the results? Do you see the difference? Okay, good. That's all I want to hear.
It's not been in vain. Our work has certainly been noticed.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, women of all business, I've made a row of business for water project updates and root. Much wood, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've talked about water updates for many, many months without action, and that changes tonight. So if you look at your agenda, I've got a couple of different categories to make it a little more clear about how things will work now. You see construction soon, permitting soon, design soon, and awards soon, hopefully. So we'll start with the ones that are beginning construction soon. This is, the first item is the Nevo Phase 1A and 1B. Ms. Craig has passed out a packet for your attention. There are two resolutions in your packet that overview the bids that we exchanged about a week and a half ago. So there's a resolution that accounts those bids. You see the bids there in front of you for 1A and 1B. So 1A and 1B both have the same low bidder, which is very helpful. They're both projects in the general neighborhood, so that is very helpful to not have two different contractors, which is kind of the idea of bidding separately like this, maybe a conventional pricing. So 1A, you see the amount there, well over $2 million, and you see the eight bids, which is great. And then for 1 bid, also had eight bids from the same contractors and the corresponding low bid as well. So for 1A, it was High Pipeline LLC, I believe they were out of Haywood County. 1A was $2,493,385. 1B was $1,330,695.5. So I'm asking for you to do a couple of things here. First is to approve the receipt of the bids for 1A and 1B. Second is to approve, and you can do it all in one motion, that's fine, approving awarding the low bid to High Pipeline LLC for both bids, and approving the resolutions for both 1A and 1B.
Pleasure, Board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the receipt of the bids. We approved the resolution of the intended award, and I don't know about any bill for the lowest bidder to receive, being High Pipeline.
Second. Got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
I will point out, you do have a printout that I typed up that shows where this funding is coming from. Sometimes we get in a hurry and don't explain funding. This is coming from state funding. It's actually federal funding passed through the state. This is being deducted out of the $11 million appropriation that has been provided to the county, and so you see 1A and 1B on that budget, and then estimate for Phase 2, which is still being designed, seem to be permitted, and then the remainder at this point.
So what's ever been allocated to this board, right?
Right, I could change panel of Phase 2.
You led the introduction, that is very important.
Pending vote.
All favors out. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. The next item, I haven't talked a lot about this one, just here and there. We have received funding from the Industrial Development Fund from NC Department of Commerce to run water and sewer lines along College Drive near the Universal Building. This is primarily for the purpose of providing water and sewer access to our building sites there, including where Forza is announced to go, as well as future building sites, which we talked about there. So you have the bid information there from the engineer, his letter requesting that the, again, the bids be received and the low bid be awarded to Kemp-Sigman Construction. The bid on that project for water and sewer was $881,610.68. That's IDF funding, which is state funding, and it'll be matched with the county's American Rescue Plan Act money. It's about 1/3 IDF and 2/3 American Rescue Plan Act.
Much pleasure, Board.
Take motion to accept the receipt of the bids and accept the Kemp-Sigman Construction as the award business to do this.
Second. Motion, second. Any other discussion? All favors this out? Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. That's all the action. There's updates in your memo. Be glad to highlight any of those you might have questions about.
Okay. We'll move on to item B, which is the broadband update. Much wood.
Thank you. I hope by tonight, we would have had a grand announcement from the NC Department of Information Technology about the new grant program completing access to broadband or CAB. However, I do not have that announcement, but I will talk about it just for a second. You see in your memo, I did sign the Great Grant Agreement with Spectrum about a week and a half ago. Asked for an update, and they're just working on the final design phases of that, and they'll do some field work in the next couple of weeks. So it'll probably be later in the calendar year before that work starts, from my understanding. And speaking about CAB, the county has $900,000 left from the original allocation you made some time ago of rescue plan funds. CAB is different than GREAT. The GREAT program that was set up to primarily be between American Rescue Plan Act dollars passed through the state, as well as private dollars from the companies. And if the local governments wanted to put in money, they could. Because Ford put in $100,000, which was dictated by the company. It could have been higher, but they said $100,000 would be great. We'll do more. So that was great for us that they weren't asking for more. The CAB instance, this grant requires a minimum of a 35% contribution from the county. So minimum 35. The state will do another 35% minimum, and the company has to a maximum of 30%. So it's a little bit different setup. So when you do that math based on a 35% minimum for the county, that sets a project at about 2.5 million, and that's it. That would wipe us out as far as the $900,000. And so that's a smaller project, considering the GREAT grant was a little over $8 million, $8.5 million, compared to, which is about 1,300 households, $2.5 million, maybe it's proportionally smaller. So I haven't heard from any of the companies out there yet. I haven't gone knocking on their door yet to see if they intend on applying. I've had some preliminary conversations, said they're still looking at it and still evaluating, but no one has approached me and said, yes, mark is down. So I anticipate they will, though, whether it's Optimum, Spectrum, Frontier, somebody else. So I did want to make sure, as a board, you still want to keep plowing ahead with CAB. I will not submit a grant application without bringing it back before you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion if we have, give staff permission to proceed to complete the intended board, which was to spend that million dollars towards matching and extending broadband internet as far as we can go with it.
Got a motion, second. Any other discussion?
And that's really just right now for information, and you will be bringing it back.
Yes, sir. I'll bring it back. That's right.
Good. All favors out. Thank you. Next on the list is item C, which is building projects. Much wood.
Yes, sir, thank you. This list has probably been on the agenda, this item, for probably four or five years, and it changes the topic as we go. We renovate buildings or decide not to or what have you. So the first item, I don't always talk about this one at this meeting. I sometimes leave it for our third Monday meeting because it's DSS-related, but I've not talked about it in a while. This is some direction you've given about the DSS building replacement. So I want to make sure I don't forget about on this meeting as well. So I want to make sure I don't forget about it on this meeting as well. So again, just to kind of remind you where we stand with that, about a month and a half ago, you authorized signing a contract with architecture firm Little, which is based in Charlotte. Little has worked in the DSS and the human services space for some time, done building projects across the state. And so Mr. Riddle and I have been on site with the architects, actually two different sites, looking at properties on Spalding Road. We are, they've done some preliminary evaluations, so this is property across from the law enforcement center, as well as beside it. We've always, in my mind, I think, considered the site across from law enforcement center, which is a very large site. It does have some topography on it. They noticed on the map that there's some green space, green site on the other side of the road, so we looked at that site as well. So they're essentially just kind of doing some internal evaluation and sizing just to see, you know, what would fit on either site. Maybe where it has to go on the larger site, but if it could go on the smaller site, we wouldn't want to handicap ourselves, but that's something they're going to look at as well. They've not started a meeting yet with Mr. Signan or their staff, and we'll be involved with that, but that should start relatively soon. So obviously keep you apprised as we develop. The next item, you authorized sometime ago an architect to look at the services building specifically and related to the second floor. Probably about a year and a half ago, you directed that probation parole staff to move to that second floor and vacate the current occupants most part of that floor. I've met, as Mr. Riddle with me, with the architect numerous times, and he is trying his best to come up with a design that fits the state requirements to that space. I think I've mentioned to you that preliminary design had a lot of walls and doors and things coming out, so we asked him to do something different that probably lower cost. A few minutes ago, I got an email from him that he's working to get those numbers from me. A lot of contractors that he dealt with are putting actual bids together, so getting some estimates or together, I was thinking a little longer than anybody would. So as soon as I have that, I will share that with you as far as cost estimates for that renovation. The next item, some months ago, you voted more or less around this topic as far as animal shelter. You voted to proceed with the sale of what was the Fodger's pilot plant, the small animal processing facility. You directed that the sale proceeds of property go towards the renovation or replacement of that animal shelter for domestic animals. That's part of that motion. So as far as the sale of that property that is in process, Mr. Coates is working on some of the documents related to it. We're waiting for the survey to be completed and recorded. Animal shelter, we have met with several donor individuals, families, couples, that have committed to donate upwards of $350,000 towards the cost of a shelter project. And so if you add 350 to 275, which is the cleared proceeds from the sale of that property, you're 625. It's probably not going to build a building, clearly. So what I would need to understand, sort of like Mr. Prabhas' item before, you need to have a starting point, and so only an architect really can do that. And so I have met the firm that has evaluated our needs before called Form and Function, they're out of Asheville. They have submitted a proposal that is attached to do some preliminary sketches and estimates. So you would have a cost for any remainder beyond that 625. The proposal is attached and for doing the preliminary schematic design and design development, it'd be $15,000 total for that.
Much pleasure, Gordon.
Mr. Chairman, I'd much like to go ahead and allow staff to proceed with Form and Function Architectural Firm to design and bring back a cost estimate to the board for the board review.
Okay. Second. Motion is second. Any discussion?
The funds will be carried out of the money.
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. Next on the new business, we move on to I've made, which is the courthouse project. Mr. Wood, you'll need something else.
Thank you. This is a project that is, I've spoken with our court report, Ms. Adams, about this project, seems like about two or three years. As you know, the administrative office of the courts, based in Raleigh, more or less can implement different directives related to operations of the court system that we are then required to fund. This is one instance where they're doing something very thoughtful in implementing new cabling, new wireless capabilities and communication in the courthouse, and are pretty much telling us to pay for it. So thankfully Dogwood Health Trust heard that, and they understand part of that is going to be beneficial for some early appearance, especially for child welfare. It'll allow some technology for children especially to test the eye cases remotely to where they don't have to be in the courtroom with just maybe someone that's done hard for them. So for that reason, they are providing a grant, really for no other. So there's some blanks in your form, and we're waiting kind of last minute to get some of that cost. The total property cost is about $35,000. So the $20,000 grant would reduce it to 15, so that'll be the challenge shared.
And you're getting a mandatory, maybe by the state, and we have no option but to go and make a motion at this point to approve.
That's right.
Proceeding with the grant.
Grant.
So moved. Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Moving on to I've made, which is the Maple Leaf Breakground Playground Grant, if you will, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. This is a grant that the county had sought and received. It's the Accessibility for Parks Grant that Mr. Silver worked so well on as far as providing for playground and picnic shelters at Maple Leaf. $500,000 grant requires a $100,000 match, which you've identified to come from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Asking for approval of the grant.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have that brought back to the board in a certain time, because that project has been ongoing for a while. So I would say within 30 days by our next meeting, have that design brought back to the board for review. Let's, okay, Mr. Wood, test his motion.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Wood. I've made, which is the Gold Rush 5K. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. The Glenwood Ruin Tank Club is hosting, I believe it's maybe the fourth or fifth Gold Rush 5K, and they will do it around Pile Spout Room. If you look at your ordinance there, page 62, there's some crisscross through there. We had done that because DOT had told us the routing that was proposed would not be allowed because of some road construction. We heard late Friday that actually the bridge construction should be done, and we can do this routing, so this is the ordinance that will be.
Mr. Chairman, I'd much like to approve that ordinance that was presented.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay. I've made, JCPC approval, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. You have three items here. You are required by statute to approve the membership roster for the JCPC, which is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. So you have that, you have their annual spending allocation plan, as well as a resolution of support requesting that salaries at juvenile detention facilities be adjusted due to low staffing levels. So the first two are required, the third is optional, but it's being requested by JCPC.
Pleasure, Gordon. Make a motion to accept the membership roster that's presented and the spending allocation plan, and for a resolution to support request salaries.
Got a motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor that say aye. Any opposed? Okay. I've made the motion update, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Again, for information, you have the sales tax report prepared by Ms. Bell, as well as a condensed version of your budget ordinance there in the colorful news. You also have two project ordinance amendments for the Universal Industrial Park Project and the Recreational Improvement Project, as well as several budget amendments. Ask for your approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd much like to approve that present.
Second. Motion is second. We have any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Mail for B, administrative items.
Thank you. Quite a, well, not quite a few. You do have quite a few EMS write-offs. This is an unusual number for us that we're requesting. I was asked earlier, is this related to anything that our new third-party collection agency is involved with? It does not. These are over 10 years old, which we can't collect anymore, and people that have passed away from the state. You also have a waiver request by half of the school system for $10,513 for inspection fees for the tennis court project. Transit is asking for an update to their system safety plan, and there's contracts for the auditor, for an event auditor. Approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd much like to approve the EMS write-offs, the waiver, the fee, the transportation safety plan, and the contract for the auditor report.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Next is board, on the seventh, Madam Clerk.
So we are still searching for a vacant seat to serve on Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and this month I'm going to do a first read for the jury commission. Next month, there will be a vacancy, so we will accept applications for that vacancy. And the memo that I sent to you last week was changed a little bit for the Historic Preservation Commission. There was one applicant that submitted an application kind of last minute, and based on the votes from, it looks like a three to two vote, Ms. Charlotte Bryant was voted to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay. Here. All right. Next, I've made to tax matters.
Thank you. These are routine, and there's a couple of releases and refunds for your approval.
Most of them approved. Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, moving on to I've made.
Yes, sir.
Vice chairman.
Sure. One thing that caught my attention today is looking, watching the news, and I know that our State House and State Senate is currently, there's a bill on each side of the chamber, but the one we'll focus on is House Bill 574, the Fairness in Women's Sports Act. And we, this, I read a few things in the bill. The bill was initially meant for high school and middle schools, but it's been expanded. And what it does, the bill requires athletes to play on teams based on their biological birth, sex at birth, and not their gender identity. And I think it's unfair, I've got girls to play for, and I think it's not fair to have a male who says he feels a certain way, identifies a certain way, to be able to go in there and compete, because males by, and I've done some research, are physically built differently. They've got an automatic advantage right out of the gate. So what I'm asking that is the board that endorses House Bill 574, the Fairness in Women's Sports Act, and submit our support to our House member, our Senate members, and the governor and lieutenant governor, and Speaker of the House and the Senate side too.
Are you making that a motion?
I'm making a motion right now.
Second. We have a motion in second. We have any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
And the second thing is, our tag office does a great job, but we are missing opportunities for our citizens that may have a title issue, and they need to get an instant title. And the state grants county's Department of Labor vehicles the right to do that. Our county currently is not licensed to the state to be able to do that. I think this is a service that we should make our people have the right to neighboring county. I know that they offer that service in Burke County and Bunkham County right now. And I feel that our tag office should be able to accommodate any needs that our people have without sending them out of county. And so I'm requesting that we contact here again our House and Senate member and the D. member in Raleigh, we need to, and just express our, as ours aboard, to have our tax office have that ability to do so upon completion of proper training. And also, we're losing out on boat registrations. They said it's a big thing right now, but with the best lake, the most pristine lake in the top chain here, Lake James, right now, people go to different places here or there, whereas our tag office says they're missing out on major revenue. And here again, it'd be a service that'd be provided by our D. B. So.
I'm saying a motion.
Okay. Motion is second. Discussion. I would say that on the boat registration, most people have to have those mailed, you know, send into Raleigh to get those, and so the state's getting all the benefit of that. I think it'd be good that the county did get a little bit.
Are you saying that the other counties, that you can go to the tag office and take care of your boat registration rather than going to a law office?
There are some.
There are some that are doing it now.
The one in Burke, and it's something that D. B. is, if you look it up somewhere, they are promoting that as a way of partnering with other agencies. So that's something they're not opposed to. Those require different cash handling. You're not allowed to kind of cross politic money, but it is being done successfully elsewhere.
So they would simply be an agent for North Carolina law.
That's right.
Okay, the motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Okay. So, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to citizen comments. Madam Clerk, we have any signups?
We do.
Okay, Mr. Staff and Force. Your motion, Mr. Wood?
So moved.
If you could recess to Thursday.
My question would recess to May 11 at 5:00.
Second.
That's at 54 Collins Drive here.
All in favor say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.